of young working families. So that Rotary Library did speak to that. But if it's unsustainable, then we could not carry forward with that operation. And when we made the decision in late November and closed that library permanently emptied the space by the end of last year, all of that material, all of those resources, those properties that you have invested in. We weren't near, we weren't thinking about getting rid of them. We had to look at ways to fold them into our existing collection up here. It's very, very pinched for space. And we knew that that was going to happen. So if, if you were to walk into the library right now, you cannot move around the children's area. You certainly can't sit there with your children and play or enjoy anything other than pulling a book off a shelf to take it home. That, that is a great strain on, when we reopen, we know that we're going to be jammed. So the top priority from very early on in the community needs assessment was how can we combine our services, resources and programs under one roof? We knew that that had to happen. And when the board made the decision before this was even drafted and the board made the decision to close Rotary, this became a top priority. And I understand that it may take a little bit more time to, to get this back on the table. It is a priority to make sure that the facility is adequate to the needs that we see, that we address for the community, that young family component, that early literacy activity, it's vital. All right. There were some very lofty statements in this, and I'm not going to read through it because you've all read through it. But you must have noticed by now that we've updated our vision, our mission and our values. And the values are very important. The accessibility and the approachability of the library as a resource, as a community service. We know that we're being well accessed by people who, how do I want to say this, that are marginalized, that are not necessarily on the higher end of the economic scale and that this sometimes creates what was conceived of as a barrier. People didn't feel comfortable walking into the library when somebody was sleeping on a couch. We need to be accessible to those people. But the only way that we can accommodate all members of the public that use our service is to provide space where designated space where social activity can happen apart from the collection. It used to be when I arrived in 2017 that that front entrance to the library was a lounge. And that's where a lot of those issues came into place. We rearranged the space. But now we're, we're seeing that space is too tight and that we need to look at, at solutions. We are, we value receptive and responsive services. So we are open to ideas. We're open to suggestions and we will respond as we can to those concerns or issues. We're innovative and we're inclusive. If there's a way to, how do I want to say this? You're limited only by the scope of your imagination. That's a catchphrase that I've had since I was in university. Think, when, when people say think outside the box, I say, what, there's a box? Really? There is no box. I'd like to think that. I'd like to carry that as my mantra for the rest of my life, but I know that there are limitations. So to imagine your way outside of those limitations is a key to success. If you shoot for the moon, you'll land among the stars. That's one of the reasons why I say this is an ambitious plan. Diversity and inclusivity, that speaks a little bit to that accessibility and approachability for marginalized and isolated individuals. We know that we have seniors in this community and we provide service to those seniors, even though we're closed. If they cannot come in, we go to them. So if the, if Mohammed won't go to the mountain, the mountain has to go to Mohammed. That's the way to, to provide excellent services. And we're unique. There's not many libraries that do the outreach service. There's a lot that are doing curbside service, but not a lot that are going out. It's, it's a specialized service. And we're all about fun and freedom. So people have the freedom to think what they want, to, to express themselves through any respectable way. How do I want to say this? Fun and freedom. You have the freedom to think. You have the freedom to express. You have the freedom to explore. And this is our, our four words that we've, we've used as our platform for the last several years is imagine, engage, explore and discover. So the library is a portal. It's an, it's an ideal lab. It's a place where people can launch all kinds of journeys of discovery. And all you need is a little imagination to spark the interest. A means to engage, and that's through the library, through reading, through listening to audiobooks, through entertainment, watching movies. And to explore those possibilities, to branch yourself out by the choices you make and discover yourself, discover your, your potential. Now libraries are a cornerstone to society in terms of propelling an economic, economic success. The services that we provide, even though we're closed right now because of a mandated restriction, we still provide services. We still have people using our Wi-Fi. I send the stats to council every month. And it's, it's incredible when the facility is closed, the numbers for virtual connection, the literature, to programs, they increase. So we may not be open physically as a physical space, but we've been providing services. We've been providing the programs. We've reached people. And I've got letters from patrons thanking us for the services that we provide despite the barriers that are imposed on us. So again, to the plan, a physical space, it is something that we would, we feel is necessary, but we understand that it may take some time. Welcoming faces, this is about our staff. Often we are one of the first places, places that people come when they visit Drayton Valley or move to Drayton Valley. Our, our staff are the face of the community. We are community residents, so we understand what, what lifestyle and living is like in this, in this community. And we're able to connect people in really meaningful ways to other services, to other resources, to, to tools and resources for learning literacy lifestyle, for living. We, we've had, in fact, last week, we had a fellow who doesn't have a computer. He just came to the community and he needed to send a resume to Warehouser. So we booked a computer, a public computer. We're closed to the public. This had to be by a special appointment and we helped him to, to get his job application sent. This is one of the hidden services that we provide unless you need it, you don't even think about it. This is really important to understand. Libraries are vital. And you don't necessarily know about everything that we have to offer until you need it. Come to the library and we're the face that helps to connect. Satisfying curiosity, that's resources. Well, right now, as I've mentioned several times, we're pinched. But we, we have goals for increasing some of the tools and the resources to help respond to the demands in our community. Early language and early literacy development, other language, so languages other than English, ELL we call them, but there's, there's many different terms, ESL, ELL. Our junior and our youth collections, we had to weed them down. When, when Rotary had to fold into the main branch, we took out everything that was a duplicate and anything that was damaged. And we still don't have room. But if we are able to tailor our, the development of those collections appropriately, we will succeed in providing the best resources, the best bang for your buck. Culture of community. Well, what is the culture of community? It's a question, but that's okay. I already expected an answer. Culture of community is connecting with your roots, knowing your, your community as a hub for art, culture and social engagement. So what I've been working on recently is a tool to help identify and connect the agencies that provide services in the community. We have an interagency group, but not everybody knows when the MAT program is open. Not everyone knows how to refer somebody who's knocking on our door to a place where he can get a shower or she can get a shower or food. With COVID, that becomes increasingly difficult. But it is something that we've been facing over the last several years, an increase in people looking for how, how and where to access these services. So I've been putting that together. And this is all part of the programs as well, the literacy component. We, we are planning to run our summer reading program this year come hell or high water. And we're not looking to do it as just a virtual platform. Last year it was forced to be entirely virtual. If at all possible, we will be doing our in-person programs out on the front lawn with some event tents so that we can still do the program if it's raining. It's absolutely vital to connect in any way possible, to connect people to arts, to culture, to literacy, to learning, to maximize their, their endeavors to improve their condition, their quality of life. And this is what the library provides. So this is in effect. Our plan, I didn't go into the details, but I am open to respond to any questions or comments about the plan and about our service model as we move forward into the next five years.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that presentation. Is there any questions? Counselor Dodds.
Good morning, Doug. Thank you for that. So just a question, if somebody were to come in and order a book that you didn't have in-house, how long does it take normally to get the book in?
Yellowhead is still providing the van deliveries. So if it's coming from another library, one to two weeks, depending on its availability and where, if, if we have ordered it from a library that's in the track system. So use the Track app, order it, it should be here within one to two weeks.
Thank you very much. Counselor Ballas.
Thank you, Doug. I certainly found this to be very forward thinking and appreciate the effort and work that you put into it. In regards to a place to connect and the programs that you wish to offer in your present location, how many of those programs can you not offer?
Um, let me see if I understand the question. So in the current situation, if we were to go back to in-person programming?
And what your objectives are in your vision with your plan here?
All right. So to achieve the goals and the objectives in this plan, we would have to book the program, it's not the program space, it's, we would have to book the meeting space, board, boardroom one and two, or one and, or two, in the back by the fire department to be able to run these programs because there's no space in our program area. None. It's all filled up with stuff that came up from Rotary. So to achieve the objectives in here, if we were to open tomorrow, we couldn't, we couldn't achieve any of them.
Any other questions? Counselor Kamana.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Doug. This is a very detailed vision for the next five years. Just wondering about the, like, you know, we have physical books and we have digital books as well, right? So our ratio to physical, digital, and is there any initiative to convert the physical books to digital? And what is the usage, you know, between physical and digital for us?
That is an excellent question, Counselor Kamana. So I will say that we budget for electronic resources. They are licenses that have an expiry date. So you're, I think for most overdrive purchasing, licensed purchasing, it can circulate 24 times and then it's dead. They, they just remove it from the system, which is funny because there's no damage. There's no wear and tear like a physical book, but they kill it after 24 uses. We had budgeted, I believe it was $2,000 for e-licenses. So far this year, we've spent 3,000. Last year, I believe we spent 7,000 on ebook licenses because we recognized that the need for virtual resources had increased due to the isolation and the restrictions. We plan to spend another $3,000 to $4,000 per year. And whether we pull that out of the book buying budget or do some other stealing from Peter to pay Paul, we'll do it because that's what people can access right now. They can access our physical collections too. So we haven't eliminated the need for buying new releases there, but we've increased our electronic resource, I guess, expenses, our budget. Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor McGee. As others have said, thank you, Doug. It's, it's interesting to, the things that I pick up from what you presented this morning were things like inclusive and there is no box. And, and the vision of a library needs to continue to, to evolve, as you've suggested. And space is, is one of them. And space we're short of, so you're pinched. And I think we need to, we need to address that. I think we need to, to really look at the, the next council. We'll have to sort of really ponder that, that, that part. And your vision takes you to 2021 to be in new space and square footage. So I, I think that's important. Going back to the inclusive piece, I think that's, that's where I think it begins is because if we have no space for, for people and, you know, and not to necessarily be separated because we don't need to be separated, but we need space for people to be, to be able to use our facilities. And I think that's the, I watched that whole thing unfold in the last year through COVID and the people that needed. Were, were at special needs, right? Needs that we don't sometimes understand. And there was the library. It was warm and it was comfortable and it was safe. Huge things for marginalized communities, people in our community. So thank you for that. I, I like what you put together. I, my question is, is I, I assume that it's 100% supported by your board?
Yes.
All right. Then that's really, here it is. Let's, let's get on with the, the program and, and figure it out. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. You don't actually have to move very far because after our delegation, we're moving into our decision item 7.1, which is the appointment of Yellowhead Regional Library Board Member and Doug Winston Smith, Library Director.
I'm here. Hello. All right. So I think it was the March meeting or the April meeting, Counselor Ballas had suggested that his schedule is becoming a little overwhelmed. And he had asked if any of the other trustees on the library board would be interested in taking over as representation on Yellowhead Regional Library's board for this community. Pat Adamson had expressed an interest. She said, yeah, I could do that. She's retired, so she's got a little bit more time on her hands and certainly isn't overwhelmed. I don't think, she, she volunteered to do it. So according to the Libraries Act, it is allowed for town council to appoint somebody that isn't an elected member of council to represent the municipality on the Yellowhead Regional Library Board. And as I'd said, Pat had expressed willingness to, to step into that role.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much. Any questions for administration before a conversation about it? Okay. Yeah. So I mean, you know, we certainly appreciate Ms. Adamson stepping up. I guess it'll just be a conversation that we have to have around those tables. If we wanted elected member of council attending those meetings, I don't have the history, but I'm assuming it's been that way for a long time. I don't know. Apparently you know more than I do. Okay. So, yeah, so I guess it's just whether or not we're open to having someone from the Yellowhead or nothing, from our library board participating, or if someone else would want to put their name forward. So that is a conversation that, are you making them?
You're volunteering.
I volunteer fair enough.
So, yes, I don't know. Well, I guess, first of all, I'll ask the question, is there any member of council that would be willing to? And if not, then I guess we go back to moving forward with someone that is interested in doing it. Counselor Kamana?
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask a question, how much of a time commitment are we looking at? How many meetings would you think that YRL Library Board will have until the elections, I believe, right?
I believe YRL Board meets three, maybe four times per year. They're generally about, Bill, sorry, Counselor Ballas.
No, it's not the number of meetings. To really do justice to that committee, there is a lot of emails, there is a lot of information that's being sent out. And it actually does take a lot of time to justify what you should, as a good representative, it takes a lot of time to look into what all is happening there. And it takes up more time, and I think Nancy can attest to that as well when she was on the board, that it is very time consuming. And, you know, especially for me, I just don't have that time to put into it and feel comfortable that I'm doing a proper job. And if I'm not doing something right, I don't feel that I should be representing myself or this organization at the board level. And I'd sooner see somebody that's interested, more interested and has the time to put into it. And Pat certainly expressed that interest and I'd certainly endorse that.
Follow up. It is time consuming. Yellowhead Regional Library makes some very big decisions, some weighty decisions that affect the entire region from Jasper all the way to West Lock. That's a lot of libraries in that area. It's 40, 50, 54 libraries, I believe. So I, I respect and I understand that if you're not, if, if you're not able to read the material prior to so that you can make informed decisions on behalf of this council in terms of those regional library issues, then yeah, it's, it's difficult. And historically, the counselor that had been appointed to the library board, the local library board, had been, by and large, the favored choice for representing on Yellowhead because they were already sort of read into some of the information. But with Pat Adamson, she sits on the library board, so she is read in. She's our treasurer. She understands the impacts and the issues.
Just to expand, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, is that it's, there's always some history that is involved with, in making these decisions. And when you're new on council or when you're appointed on a yearly basis, you don't have that history that of what's happened in the past, whereas board members who have been involved there at least for three or four years have that history. They, they're more aware of what's really happening. And I think they can make better decisions.
I'm going to go to Counselor Dodds and then Counselor Wheeler.
I guess I found that when I sat on the, the board, that there was a, an abundant amount of, of emails that came from the Yellowhead. I know that sometimes it was numerous on a daily basis. And one of the things Donna from the county also said, and she said the same, she couldn't believe the overwhelming amount of emails that came. And I had spoke to you about it, Doug, and I know that, I said, is there, is there an option to opt out, unsubscribe? And you had said whatever is important that you would, you send out anyway. So you were kind of that, that middle person. So I know that I would kind of disregard, disregard, disregard until I seen something actually come from you. And then, and then I would look at it because it was an overwhelming amount of, of emails coming through. I couldn't believe it. And in my opinion, yeah, it probably would be, you know, wise to have somebody that's actually on the boards, you know, representing the Yellowhead because then they're up to speed. They know what's happening and everything like that. I just don't know what the expectations or role would be having a council member appointed versus just having somebody else from, that's on the board. I don't know.
Counselor Wheeler.
Thank you. I moved at Council Point Pat Adamson to the Yellowhead Regional Library Board for the town of Drayton Valley for a term ending October 31st, 2021.
There we go. We have a, we have a motion. Counselor Wheeler.
Yeah. There's, I would say, it probably is a majority of counselors that sit on the regional library board, but there's also members of other local library boards that are not counselors. So I don't see an issue with it at all. And I think you're right, there's a lot of commitment. So if someone's happy to do that, I think it's great, whether it's council or anyone else.
La Duke decided to appoint their library director as their representative. So if you can choose anyone.
Yeah. I think there is a value when I sat on that board for the opportunity to connect with other counselors, right? Talking to people from Hinton, Edson, like it's a big region. So for me as a council, there was value in connecting with those other counselors. But in terms of the library board, if someone else was willing to do it, I think it's good.
Counselor Kamana.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate, you know, the arguments and the comments that made, you know, it's, it's good that somebody from the library board or the counselor who sits on the library board be at the Yellowhead Library. But in my mind, on the other hand, what I'm thinking is that we, we are going into election and then after to possibly a new council, right? So I'm, I'm thinking on the other hand, are we doing injustice to the next council by not appointing a counselor? And then we have the opportunity come in the next election and the next council that they can appoint another counselor that's going to be on, sitting on the library board as well as the Yellowhead Library Board. So I'm, I'm on the, on the fence with that argument as well. Because, you know, I, I think it's important to have that contingency after that.
Did you want me to speak to that?
Counselor Wheeler, you had your.
Yeah, it's only till October 31st of this year. So the next council can decide what they want to do.
That's what I was going to say.
Okay. So this appointment is until October 31st, 2021. All right. So the motion has been made. I mean, I guess if anyone wants to sit on, speak now or forever hold your peace. All right, so the motion has been made. I mean, I guess if anyone wants to sit on, speak now or forever hold your peace.
The motion has been made, right? So I don't know if, you know, probably if I want to sit on the, if I would.
So, I mean, I like the idea of having a counselor sit on it. I mean, if no counselor wants to sit on it, then obviously I'm going to just vote in favor of someone that wants to sit on it. But if there is a council that would like to sit on it, then, you know, you can make a friendly amendment or express that you're willing to, and then we can either pass or defeat this particular motion and make a new one. So, but if they're... So Counselor Gammanna, do you have an interest in sitting on the Yellowhead Regional Library Board?
Yeah, like I mentioned, you know, the tradition of having a counselor so far and then continuing it. Like I said, I'm on the fence on that. I think it would be, you know, nice to continue that trend. And then the next council will take over from there, right? So and if, I don't, yeah, I don't mind sitting on the, like I said, it probably would be one, one more meeting.
Yeah, one, maybe two, max.
Maybe max, exactly, right? So I'm willing to give that commitment.
Okay. Okay, so we do have a council that's willing to sit on it. Would you, do we want to make a friendly amendment? Do we just want to vote on this motion? And then if it's, if the majority of us are fine with Pat, then we move forward with that. And if it gets defeated, then we'll move forward. Is everyone fine with that?
Correct. I was just going to say that, Mr. Mayor, that you would vote on this motion because it really would then significantly change the intent of the motion as it was amended.
All right. So the motion that we have, if there's no other comments, questions, or debate on this, is that we appoint Pat Adamson to the Regional Library Board, knowing that we do have a council that is willing to also sit on it. Counselor McGee, do you have a question?
I do. Just reading more comments. There's one more meeting, and you've got continuity, and you've got people enthused and ready to go. I, I just don't see us changing that.
Okay. All right. So the motion is to appoint Pat Adamson. All in favor? All opposed? That is, motion was carried. All right. All right. Well, thank you very much for your time, Mr. Winston Smith.
If possible, a letter to, that I can forward to Pat to let her know that she's been appointed to that position that could also be CC'd to Yellowhead. Be appreciated.
All right. I'm sure we can draft that up.
Thank you very much.
All right. 7.2, checking the time. We still got a little bit more before a break. 7.2, Appointment of Returning Officer. Ms. Dreeson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's on it. So of course, this year, October 18th, we have a municipal election. And then through the Local Authorities' Election Act, which governs the running of elections within all pretty municipalities, states that elected authority made by resolution appoint a returning officer for the purposes of conducting elections. That returning officer is the person appointed under the act and serves as the responsible person for putting in place all of the requirements underneath the Elections Act to carry out the municipal election properly and thoroughly. This resolution, of course, we must provide transparency to the public, so it is required as a council resolution. So with that, we actually do have in our presence Pam Theeson, who is being put forward as the returning officer for our election this fall on October 18th. And so the information is presented to council and looking for a resolution from council to appoint Pam Theeson as the returning officer for the 2021 municipal election.
All right. Thank you very much for that, Ms. Dreeson. Any questions for administration? Counselor Ballas?
Just a clarification because I thought at one time we did appoint and pass by motion for another person. Now, do we have to do something with that motion before we can do this?
Thank you, Counselor Ballas. No, the individual that was appointed as returning officer is no longer within the organization. So just with, by the fact that that person is no longer with the organization just means that we have to appoint somebody new.
Do you have to be part of the organization to be the returning officer?
No, you do not.
Yeah. I understand what you're saying, Counselor Ballas. So, so you don't have to be part of the organization to be appointed. So her no longer being with the organization, are we confident that she's?
The, the previous resolution dealt with appointing an individual who was on staff as the returning officer. That person is no longer on staff. The opportunity is here where we, and we have in the past, appointed a returning officer that is not a member of the organization. So that is what is being presented today.
So, so this appointment, I guess, ended the day with supersede any other appointment that we've made regarding this?
Correct.
Counselor McGee?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we appoint Pam Theeson as the returning officer for the 2021 municipal general election.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Any comments, questions, or debate? Counselor Wheeler?
I just want to thank Pam for stepping up. It's really important to all of us, as well as everyone else. But it's a big job, and I think you'll do great. So thank you.
Yeah. All right. Anything else? All right. So the motion is that council appoint Pam Theeson as a returning officer of the 2021 municipal general election. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much for your commitment to our community. All right. 7.3, Rescinding Policy A-202-19, Drayton Valley Smart Community Security Camera Pilot Policy. Ms. Stone?
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
So following council's decision to end the smart cities initiative with tellus in February, this makes policy A-219 null and void. It's not necessary for us to have. It doesn't pertain to any other functions that we have in our organization. So we're just asking for council to rescind the policy.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for administration? Counselor Wheeler?
Do we know what will happen to the cameras?
They're supposed to be taking them down. And like, their telluses.
That's, yeah, a little more clarification of whose property it was, and, okay.
Maybe we'll just replace it with cardboard cameras, so people think that they're still there. Counselor Ballas?
I move that council rescind the Drayton Valley Smart Communities Security Camera Policy A-219.
All right. So I've received the hint that I'm not moving along fast enough, so.
Yeah, you're in a hurry today.
Duly noted. All right. So the motion, well, sorry, any comments, questions, or debate on this? So the motion is that we rescind the Drayton Valley Smart Communities Security Policy A-202-19. All in favor? That is carried. All right. So maybe instead of asking for the preamble, I just ask for a motion on this one, or? Okay, so 7.4 is our 1994 Volvo fire truck, truck engine number three, and ask Mr. Thompson, our fire chief.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council.
Good morning.
So this morning, I am here to request council's decision on our old 1994 Volvo fire engine, which has served the community since 1994, and it was taken out of service once Engine Five came in in 2017. As the fire department has limited space in our fire hall, we are looking to dispose of this asset. Just a little bit of a background, most fire apparatus, by the time it reaches 20 years of service, it is pretty much done. And it's not necessarily mileage because that's kind of the first thing that everybody asks about, what's the mileage on it? It's not the mileage, that's the problem. It's the wear and tear on the vehicle itself that, that tends to, tends to wear it out. This engine is 27 years old, and it has served its, its purpose here. Counselor McGee would know this, this vehicle very well because he was around with myself when this, when this engine first came in. This does fit within our disposition of surplus goods under Section 2.4 of that policy. So it, the request that we are asking today does fit in that. We are recommending that council donate this vehicle to a, the firefighter aid Ukraine program. That's where we are asking respectfully.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Gammanna?
I'm just going with the flow. I would like to make a motion that council direct administration to donate 1994 Volvo fire engine truck, Engine Three, to firefighter aid Ukraine as a donation to the third world country. Thank you.
Comments, questions, or debates? Questions?
Is there a cost to actually ship it over?
No. The, the organization looks after all of the costs. So they'll take care of that.
Counselor Dodds?
Yeah, I was just going to ask kind of a similar question. So how does it, how does it get there then?
Basically, rough way of how the process works is we sell the vehicle to this organization for a dollar or whatever. And then at that point, they, they will be able to have insurance and registration, take it down to, to where it goes. We have, the last truck that we, we donated back in 2010, I believe it was, was put on a, on a ship and sent that way. We also have seen other, this other, this organization has also driven the vehicles down. So it all, all depends on where it's going and who's available to deliver it.
So obviously, this is something that's been done several times in the past, that within firefight organizations, this is kind of something that's traditionally done?
Correct.
Oh, that's awesome. And do you ever get any, like, any pictures or any, any information that's sent back to, they show how it's being used and?
Yeah. Actually, the, in the package there, the last truck we sent, which was our water tender back in 2010, they, the, the fire department there sent us photos of how it was being used. And as you can see from the photos, the, the public that was receiving the truck was extremely overwhelmed by getting that donation. And that truck was then not only used to fight fires, but it was also put into delivering water to rural communities. So it's very beneficial.
Yeah. Actually, it's, if you get tip of Alaska and Russia really close, and the water's not that deep, so they'll probably just like drive it through that straight and then just drive onto Ukraine is probably how it'll get there. Counselor McGee?
I did take some joy in, in looking at the Guatemalan pictures. It does, it makes, it makes great sense. I understand it completely, and I support that. The, the only question I might have is that, is it, is it the town? Or do we, do we need to ask our, our comrades on the other side of the fence what their position is?
This is 100% town-owned asset.
And it's comrades on the other side of the wall. Okay. So this is a town-owned asset, so we have the ability to do what we wish with it. And I think if we can make the world a better and safer place for everyone, I think it's something that we should certainly take into consideration. So the motion is that council direct administration to donate the 1994 Volvo fire engine, truck engine three, to firefighter aid Ukraine as a donation to a third world country. All in favor? That is carried. So we just got one more decision item before we call a break. 7.5, Ms. Dreeson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the construction of the new aquatic facility underway, of course, the local community aquatic facility committee is busy with getting sponsorships and donations. And there's another meeting tonight with that group, so we'll get an update from them as well. They have, of course, been announcing and frequently coming to council with recommendations to have naming sponsorships approved. This time, in today's meeting, we will be officially presenting Pembina Pipeline Corporation as being the naming sponsor for the Natatorium Solar Power Panel. And I know that might be a new term for some people, natatorium. It's kind of a cool name to say, but that is the portion of the facility that is over the main pool tanks. So wherever the tank, the entire swimming pool area. This sponsorship allows Pembina Pipeline Corporation to have the naming rights for a period of 10 years. Sponsorship value is $100,000, and that will be paid over a five-year term of $20,000 each year effective the day of signing. So with that, administration is pleased to present the proposal to have the naming opportunity for the Natatorium Solar Power Panel given to Pembina Pipeline Corporation.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for administration? Sir, council, I'd like to make a motion. See, I grabbed it in there. You guys are too slow. Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you. I move that council approve the sponsorship rights agreement between the town and Pembina Pipeline Corporation as presented.
Yeah, thank you. Again, an excellent work by our committee in finding donations. And obviously Pembina Pipeline having a, a long history in Drayton Valley. And they've been very generous in our community over a number of years. So it's not surprising to see them step up again because that's just what they do. So we do appreciate, once again, them being involved in an important project in our community. So the motion is that we approve the sponsorship rights agreement. All in favor? That is carried. And, you know, I'm feeling generous today. I will call an 11-minute break, and we'll come back. For our decision items, we're on to department reports and we'll start with planning and development. Mr. Ellis. You are in the hot seat, sir. Too bad we don't have like the lights and the music like Who Wants to be a Millionaire? Do, do, do.
We need Jamie Kimmel sitting at the front too. He's the new host. It's great having the mayor sitting at the front. So, good morning, mayor and council. Planning and development updates. Typical, we've seen a, the typical increase in development permits and building permits as we're into the start of construction season. And some property standards matters. We've seen improvement in a couple of our most known unsightly property matters. We do realize this is an ongoing issue. And it's unrealistic for us to police every property in the town, but we do tackle the most severe cases that detrimentally affect the amenities of the community. And we've witnessed an improvement on some of these worst cases. So there's still more work to do, but I think we see that as a small victory. And, you know, we tackle the ongoing day to day issues with half our staff in the office and half our staff at home. And as with everybody pretty much right now, given COVID-19. And then that's pretty much it for us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions? Counselor Dodds?
Can you just give me an update or let me know? And I don't know if maybe now it's the time to ask. What's happening with the egg, the new egg building or farmer's market building? I'm hearing that there's a bit of confusion or a bit of a holdup coming from our end, I guess. So could you just clarify kind of what's going on there?
Thank you, Counselor Dodds. I'm working on a, a direct control district right now and I'll be bringing forward reports on that soon. The land use bylaw states that a farmer's market must be located in a direct control district because farmer's market is so uniquely different than any other defined land use. So we need to comprehensively evaluate that specific property that the farmer's market will be located on. And I'll be bringing that forward soon. We just got a scaled site plan for the parking. That will be as part of the proposed use. So that, can't really give out too much details right now, but it's, that proposes about 20 some parking stalls on the site. And the balance of the parking after those 20 some parking stalls on the site will need to be on adjacent or nearby sites and we'll need a signed parking agreement with the property owners of those sites.
So I guess that there's concern on their end that it doesn't need to be amended or something. And, and I guess the question I, and I'm just asking is because it is, it's actually not the farmer's market who bought it. It's the egg society. So the owner or the egg, like the egg society owns the building or agriculture. So would it not be zoned for under the agriculture rather than the farmer's market? Or is it, or is it because they're the occupant? Or where's the confusion coming from?
Correct. The egg society did buy the building, but the egg society, I understand, runs the farmer's market. So the, the zoning, of course, doesn't, does not deal with who owns the building. That deals with the area that the property is located in within the town. And that is a commercial, light industrial area on Industrial Road. The issue with zoning, allowing a farmer's market in that district, which is the general commercial district, is with all farmer's markets typically is parking. That site is kind of a tight site to accommodate a farmer's market. And we're trying our best to accommodate them. But farmer's markets are typically on kind of large sites because they're, they are very land intensive kind of use. And this site is much smaller. So we need to evaluate what the impacts to surrounding properties would be. And that's, that's why we just don't allow them in general commercial properties. That is basically like three quarters of the town.
So the farmer's market where it's now, just because it's temporary, did they just have to, how are they running? Like, is it under a special license or, or because it's the church? Or how are they occup, or running now?
They could run, they run now under like a temporary, temporary use permit. But the, the new location on Industrial Road is intended to be the farmer's, the egg societies' permanent year round location for the farmer's market.
Counselor Peoples and Counselor McGee?
I wasn't going to jump in on reports, but I, I know that they'd been talking to surrounding, like owners of buildings and stuff, including the mall. So I think they even have it so the vendors can park all on the backside of the parking that they have behind the Hamden's Mall. And they could also use the far side of the parking lot over by the brick. And they were trying to figure out having a, like a golf cart or something. Pick people up and kind of take them around if they want to go shopping. So they're, they're trying to work to try to make it work. But are we like actively trying to find ways so that they can actually utilize that site? Are we just kind of saying, no, it's not working?
I understand. Thank you, Counselor Peoples. I understand that they have been in, the egg society has been in contact with some of the surrounding property owners, but I don't, I, I'm reluctant to get into the exact, the details of the exact conversation in a, between two property owners in a public forum such as this.
Counselor McGee?
Two things, not to relate it to the farmer's market, but construction season has started. So we're seeing more permits. Is there something like really exciting that you could say, this is really exciting. You should know about this. The second question I have is the ARC Resources and Shangri-La. I think that, that piece has come together. Have we, do we know that? And have we let the, the lodge know that we have that agreement?
Thank you, Counselor McGee. In terms of exciting projects, of course, the new HW pickup school is, is coming. So stay tuned for more information about that shortly. And for the Shangri-La, we have signed the, the agreement to amend the release for the portion of the access road. So that's being sent down to their head office in Calgary as we speak, if it's not there already.
Any other questions? All right. To a move on to 8.2, engineering. Owen Olnick.
Morning, council.
Morning.
So just to touch on some of the projects coming up, sidewalk replacement project will start next week. I've been trying to get the dust control and the line painting project off its feet. However, it went from cold to raining. So I'm kind of touching base with the contractors every couple of days just to kind of keep up on the weather. So once it's dry, we'll commence with that. The, like I mentioned before, the Omniplex Bridge, it's currently under construction, should be ready for about the first week of June for the retention pond desilting and reshaping. It, we're just waiting for first calls to come in before the contractors will start to commence that work. And that's so far what's going on. So I'm open to any questions you might have.
Perfect. Any questions? Counselor McGee?
One quick one. Can you send out possibly a map of what sidewalks that we've approved and, and where you're going so that we, if people are asking, would we also consider a communication piece on that? Have you thought through that?
Thank you, Counselor McGee. Yeah, I absolutely do have the itinerous list that I can submit to you guys. And we can for sure do a communications piece, just kind of letting them know in no prioritized order for the stretches.
Yeah, I did appreciate your note from the citizen that, that wrote in saying, where's my sidewalk? And you, you responded. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Gammanna?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a question, but just a comment. I've got feedback from a couple of community members that, yeah, I appreciate the, the work that the public works doing, sidewalk cleaning and all of that. So just wanted to pass that message to you. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Peoples?
Seeing the hot box 5,000.
Seeing the hot box 5,000 guys, so quite a bit. How's that going? They seem to be figuring it out. They seem to be getting even a little bit faster at it. So maybe just an update how that's going.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Peoples. Yeah, they are definitely getting the knack for it. And they're starting to take on the little bit of a bigger projects, like some of the dips that some of the councils have brought to our attention, especially in the northeast corner or the southeast corner of St. Anthony's there going east. Yeah. So now that the crews are getting definitely dialed into it, we can start doing the little bigger, more grievous areas. So for sure, yeah, it's going good.
And just a random technical question for a guy who doesn't understand. By doing what we're doing, kind of cutting, kind of it out, doing that, when it comes to the point where we do an overlay, does that make it a little bit easier? Or are they going to have to do the same amount of work if we were to do an overlay?
Thank you, counselor. They'll have to do the same amount of work to still have to mill it and fill it. So.
Anything else? All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. We have Community Services and FCSS, Ms. Streason.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. As you will notice, the construction of the, for the new aquatic facility well underway. They were able to squeak between the rain showers and get the organic material removed and replaced with the appropriate fill material. And yesterday's meeting with the IPD team, they were very thankful and really recognized our local contractor working on the project. Said that they've been more than accommodating and some very skilled workers. So that's great to hear about some of our local contractors here on board. COVID-19, of course, that ominous presence of it has again closed us down within our childcare center, Omniplex and the pool. And of course, it just puts a serious, yeah, just a serious note in terms of our staffing as well as the, to the community. But we are doing everything we can to try and encourage people to participate in the outdoor venues that we do have. And looking forward to whatever we can do. And if there's anybody out there with suggestions as to what we can do, just to lift spirits, we're willing to do so. The RV campground, of course, is one of the venues that remains open. So it officially opened May 7th of last week. So I highly encourage people that that is one of the things that you can do is to get out there with your campground or, or you're a camper or your tent, because we do have tent sites. And whether that's here or somewhere else within our local community, get to enjoy the outdoors. And of course, Derek Stern starts May 17th as the Omniplex and Recreation Manager. So we'll be gearing him up for full orientation on Monday. That's my report.
Counselor McGee?
Just a quick question. Notice in the RCMP briefs that the MAP program is closed.
That is correct. The MAP program is closed for this. Yes.
And remind me, it's closed because of summer or it's closed because of funding?
It has, in the history of the MAP program, always closed for the summertime. Last year, because of COVID, provincial government had us remain open and provide that summer program. This year, they're not providing the funding for a summer program. So we are reverting back to our regular program. What we don't know is whether there'll be anything this fall for our MAP program. We have not heard any positive news towards funding for a MAP program to continue this fall.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to emergency services. Mr. Thompson?
Good morning again, counsel. So this morning, I'm here to do an update on animal control and CPO. In terms of animal control, just to give counsel a few stats, for the month of March, 14 animals were brought in through animal control, which included two dogs and 12 cats. Good news is nine of those animals were returned to their owners and four were turned over to cause for critters. Fortunately, we had to euthanize one as it was very sick. So wasn't, wasn't recoverable. In terms of April, we brought in five animals, which were two dogs and three cats. Four were returned, returned to their owners and one was turned over to cause for critters. Some other happenings for animal control. Our animal control officer continues to patrol all areas of the town. We currently have a feral cat problem in our trailer parks. And so we are working with the park managers to rectify that in terms of trapping them and, and getting them under control. Megan is also working with cause for critters to potentially bring a program to the town that would trap, neuter and return feral cats, which I've identified as, as being a problem. This went to the Cause For Critters Board on Sunday for decisions to if they want to proceed with that. I still haven't heard back as to if they're, they're wanting to work with the town to, to make that happen. Of course, there's going to be a cost to that. We'll have to identify those as well before we move forward with the program. But I think it would be very worthwhile that we seriously look at that because we do have an issue with feral cats in our community. Megan also last week attended an advanced animal control course in Red Deer. This course was designed specifically to capture and control aggressive large animals. She, in talking to her, she indicated that finally someone was speaking her language when it comes to animal control. So she really appreciated the course and she enjoyed it while she was there. Moving on to our CPO bylaw enforcement, as the council is aware, our CPO officer is now a level one CPO officer. And so he has been busy patrolling areas that have been a concern to the town, such as the Evergreen School area, the road in front of the ECDC swimming pool area, as well as some of our playground areas. We did notify the public, putting this out on our website, that he, our, our CPO is now able to do traffic stops. And at this point in the stage, he has issued $2,200 worth of fines to individuals. And again, he's been, we've been working to talk about education first as opposed to just traffic enforcement. So he's been, he's been doing that, especially with him just getting these new, new abilities. So want to make sure we educate our public. Colton also attended a course last week and it was on hazardous and nighttime traffic stops, which again was very beneficial for him when he's doing his job. He also will be working with our community school resource officer. Or as counsel is aware, the schools have been shut down. So our, our community school resource officer has, has more time to spend doing community activities. Our CSRO officer, in his previous duties before he, before he came as CSRO officer for us, did traffic stops. And he was in that area for years and years. So he's going to work with our CPO officer a little bit to give him some pointers and to help him learn the, learn the ropes per se. Also, at our police security fire committee meeting, we talked about a new program, which is called the Bike Index Program. And it's on, I gave, I provided an update on page 64 and 65 for counsel. This program is an online program that's free to the public to participate in and allows our community members to register their bikes online or through an app. The public would simply upload their photos plus a description of the bike and as well as serial numbers. And it gets stored on a database, which can be easily accessed by the RCMP or our CPO officer. So any bike that has been registered can, if the bike goes missing or it is stolen, the owner can go onto the website and can mark it as stolen or missing. And if it is a child's bike and the child just left it down by a playground and then finds it a day or so later, you can also go back on there and, and say that it has been recovered. The RCMP and our CPO officer can, can go on there and monitor it and, and have a look in our community as to what bikes are, are missing so that they can keep an eye out for it. Just to give you a little bit of background in terms of stats, approximately 30 to 50 bikes were recovered by the RCMP in 2019. We had another 25 bikes that were recovered in, in 2020. So there's a significant number of bikes that go missing in our community. And so this is a very worthwhile program to, to bring to our community and encourage our, our residents to participate in. Just a few other things about the Bike Index. The Bike Index Group themselves continually monitors Facebook pages as well as things like the DV buy and sell for bikes. And they compare the bikes that are up for sale with the bikes that have been registered in the index. So if there has been bikes that have been, are being for sale and have been, should I say, stolen and now tried to be fenced, the, they will notify the RCMP and then follow up action can be taken. It also assists our CPO officer and RCMP if they do come across an individual that is riding a bike and that bike has been registered stolen, then it's much easier for them to lay charges in that situation. Residents are also able to, to go on and submit claims of ownership as well. It provides that opportunity. So if the bike has been recovered by the RCMP or the CPO officer, then there is proof from the resident by it being registered online that it belongs to, to that individual. Another good part of the program is bikes that are being sold at our local sports stores. Those bikes can also be recorded onto the system before they go out the door, which would be very advantageous and beneficial. So brand new bikes are, are being registered onto the system. The program is currently used all throughout the states. It's also used in Calgary, Edmonton, Lethbridge, as well as a few other smaller communities. And I, I would strongly recommend that counsel adopt and promote this worthwhile program in our community. And that's my report.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any questions? Counselor Dodds?
Not a question, just a big thank you for your, you and your team's efforts last week and everything that you guys did. Great job. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Pass it on.
Perfect. Anything else? Counselor Ballas?
Just in regards to the Bike Index Program. Tom, just to simplify things, we could put this on our website with, just with a link and then people would just have to go to our town site, right?
100%. If counsel feels that this is a worthwhile program, then that's exactly what we'll do.
And then is there a charge to the town?
No.
There's no charge to anybody?
No.
Thank you.
Counselor McGee?
Just to follow up. Tom, when you talk about adopt and promote, is there something more you need from us on this particular program?
Just not necessarily. I just need counsel's blessing for administration to move forward with making this happen. So I, I guess, sorry, I guess it would be, it would be much clearer. It would be much clearer if, if counsel made a motion and, and made a decision, then, then we have clear direction that we're to move forward with it.
Bring that up at our next council meeting, I'm sure. Anything else? All right. Yes, thank you very much for your report. Next is Safety and Protective Services is, you're out, you always hide right behind that pillar. I didn't see you, but welcome.
Good morning, mayor and counselors. Yeah, my biggest focus lately has been the summer students. We have all our summer students orientated now. We've been doing the training on the equipment that they'll be using this summer. With that, we've also been building competency tools so that when we train them on the equipment, not only are they, do they receive that training, but we also make sure that they understand and they can demonstrate the, what they've learned. Along with that, we've also given them flagmen training and we've sent them all for hearing tests because most of the equipment that they are using is over 85 decibel or 85 decibels. And so we've got to make sure that they're wearing the right hearing protection and that the equipment that they use don't, they don't have any hearing loss while they work for us. So that's really, that's, that's my big one is the summer students. I'll continue monitoring all summer with Nick that, who is supervising them. So. Any questions?
Perfect. Any questions? Counselor McGee?
So I was chatting with them yesterday and there, there happens to be a bag, a garbage bag in a tree. And so I said, listen, could I boost you up there and you guys can go get that bag out of the tree? And they went, I don't think so. And I don't think they know, and I don't think they know who I was. And I didn't tell them, but I just thought it was quite funny. Actually, we had a good, we, we had a good exchange, actually. And they, they, they're eager and they're ready and they were out this morning on the lawn and looks great, Shauna. Thanks.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much for that. Eight point six, finance. Ms. Thompson?
Good morning. First of all, I want to introduce Leah to you guys. So I brought her in so you guys could meet her. She was a little uncomfortable with her comfy shoes, but she wore comfy shoes to, to stuff all the envelopes for taxes today. So, yeah. Mark told her to wear comfy shoes. So she's going to be standing all day. So anyway, that brings us to our big task that we're doing this week is, which is taxes. So she's stuffing all the envelopes and stamp, or putting postage on it and they will go out in the mail tomorrow. Yeah, she's been doing really great, taking lots of initiative to learn the job and to learn it well. And so I really appreciate it. So thanks, Leah. I really appreciate it. Yeah. And moving on to some other things in finance. So I want to just highlight our balances. So the, our accounts receivable, which is our general accounts receivable other than utility or taxes, the balance is 650,000, just about. And last year at this time, it was 881,000. A lot of that we collected this year. We met with the county a few weeks ago and we got some clarity on outstanding items regarding the South Sanitary. So they made a big payment, I believe, last week. So that's really great news. Our utility receivables is at 270,000 and was at 307,000 last year at this time. And the difference there is, has largely to do with the deferral program that was running at this time last year. Lots of people weren't making payments. So it's kind of built on our receivables. So we're slowly making our way back to a balance that we're comfortable with. Our tax receivables are about 100,000, before running the notices this year, is about $100,000 more than they were at this time last year, which is almost entirely Valley Power. Util, what else is there? Yep, taxes will be mailed out tomorrow. And we got our 2020 MSI funds early this year. They were not sent out in 2020 because MSI, the government was having cash flow issues and because we weren't able to see that we were going to complete all the projects at a certain time last year. They said, well, we'll send it out next year. So we collected all that, 1.6 million. And right now we're waiting on $3 million from Small Communities Fund for the South Sanitary trunk. The reporting was sent in at the end of May. Nope, at the end of April. And so we're waiting for that $3 million, which will wrap up the funding for the, that project. That project is now done. And we're also waiting on the $250,000, which was the final disbursements for our FCM loan grant. I don't know if you guys are familiar with it, but we had to submit a bunch of environmental study questions. I don't know, one knows more about the actual reporting. But I worked together with the team and we submitted the final reporting just several weeks ago. So we should be seeing the $250,000 very shortly. And the last big grant reporting that we have to do is the ARCP. But that grant we have received, we just have to report on how we spent the money. And that project is also done and we will be submit, submitting that report here sometime in the next few months, once we have a little more time. It's not due till September. So we have a few months, but that's the next big project that we're reporting on. And that's And that's all that I have to say today. The quarterly report, Q1, for Finance will be coming to you very shortly.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions? Perfect. We'll move on to our CAO and Administration capital project update with Ms. Dreeson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My head's still swimming with all those numbers. Okay, what would I like to say? It's been, actually, the last little while has been very busy with some of the advocacy happening from this council to our provincial government. Everything from forestry, agriculture, education, childcare. So it's always good to see that because it's something that we know that we need to have that connection with the provincial government. So certainly, one of the other ones that we did, this was through the MLA office and through Diana McQueen, was a meeting with the Minister of Culture and Multiculturalism, Leela. Her, boy, she's a spitfire. But this had to do with the CFAP application for the aquatic facility. And we're hoping that she can help us out with the assistance that we need for our national swim club that put in that application. Other major things, of course, capital and operating budget. Now that it's been complete, we're initiating all the necessary protocols for putting that in place. And of course, following through on a lot of the capital projects. Although we'd only, we only have one major or a couple of big ones, there are a lot of other smaller capital projects that do take a fair amount of time, so we're busy with getting those in place. Other than that, I know that the closure of facilities again has been a hit to a lot of our members, of our staff members. And just want to let them know that we are thinking of them and hoping that we'll get through this and that we'll all see them at the, on the other side, I guess. And then just to everybody in this community and as well to our fire department for all of the assistance that had been provided to Parkland County with the fire in Tomahawk. And that's my report.
All right. Thank you very much for that. So we will move, I'm sorry, I guess it's any questions. All right. Thank you. We'll move on to our council reports and we'll start with Counselor McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think two things were, we've not met with the Shangri-La. The Brazu Foundation hasn't met. We were in a bit of a lockdown where we had one, now if you have one patient that's positive and everything locks down. So we're in that lockdown mode, but everything is fine, you can still access and be there. I was there the other day, so I'm doing some work there. Second thing is economic development, and there'll be, I think, more in our GMP. But just to update you, is the Alberta Community Partnership, that particular grant, wasn't available to us. We're aware of it, so that's been dropped. The Integrated Municipal Solutions with Jason, that's also been dropped, as you know. There's a tourism subcommittee that we continue to work with, with EPBR and the tourists and DVHTA and others. We're hoping that we, we can run two sets of groups, right? They seem to be in separate views, but not separate opportunities. I think the opportunities will be the same, it's just how they will, how they'll continue the operations of that. And I think we can speak more to that in our GMP. The commercial property ownership, you'll recall, the, we were wondering about how 50th Street or the street coming from the thrift store, owners of those particular lands and how they might understand what we might have a view as a planner in the community. So we're continuing to speak with them, putting together a, there's a, there's a piece out there called intel. So it's intel information where if somebody was able to actually access and hit a button, he would say, well, that, that property could do this. And so we're looking at spending some money in, not necessarily from economic development, but totally as a community to try to get that sort of piece of intel. Other communities are working on it, so administration is working on that. An economic development webpage is up. We continue to develop that. Under business initiatives, we have Echoterr, that's hemp alliance and biomass that ties in with Councilor Peoples and the, and so that's just, we're monitoring that. Steeper Energy, some of council were involved in a Steeper Energy and Suncor meeting. We continue to work with Diana McQueen on that. There was some consideration of furniture, manufacturing company building furniture out of used wood, continue to monitor that. There's some excitement around a music school, possibility of a music school in Drayton Valley. So I think we'd like to explore that just a little bit further. So we'll, we'll talk more about that in the GMP as well. You have as well the incentive draft review. That's where we were asking council to look at the, our incentive package and so we could put a policy together that would describe how we might move forward with that. You have that and we'll have further discussion. The Economic Energy Corridor with MLA Smith and the County of Brazu, that's monitored. That's the economic development. So I think that's all I would have at this time, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you. The last couple of weeks have been busy, but busy with between council meetings and GMP meetings and budget meetings and CAO reviews and everything else. So in terms of committee updates, I don't have anything specific, just been here. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. In regards to my report, the Library Board and as Doug mentioned this morning in his report, the need for additional space, and that's going to be one of the priorities of the, of the Library Board and for our council as well, or whatever council it's going to be. As Counselor Wheeler mentioned, there's been a lot of committee meetings, basically CAO interviews, special meeting for the budgets, some town hall meetings with like Doug Schwetzler and the Premier of our province, still working, town hall meetings with the chamber, working together, stronger together. And they're getting more and more participants, I think. And as the information, they're getting an agenda that's providing information to the public. And the last one, if anybody attended, I thought was very good. And it's going forward and I think it's something great to see it continuing in its format. And that's my report.
Thank you very much for that, Counselor Ballas. Counselor Peoples?
Thank you, worship. Nothing to report, just a statement. I think sometimes politically we get into a thing of this is for my ratepayers and this is for your ratepayers. But our community as a whole experienced a fire and just recently, and big shout-out to our amazing fire crews that were on it, helping however they can, but also seeing a community that did anything they could to try to help. People with horse trailers showing up on the highway, doing, people running up with water and supplies and foods, businesses doing it. At the end of the day, this is a community and we need to be more community-minded as a whole. But it's great to see that our community as a whole has embraced that, that this is our community, this is our problem, we're going to look after our people. So pretty proud of Drayton Valley.
Thank you very much for that. Counselor Dodds?
So we had a meeting with Minister of Advanced Education again to talk about our rural education consortium model and to, I guess, ask for provincial funding when it comes to post-secondary education and to help support the needs in our community. So those are, will continue to be ongoing. Of course, we did the groundbreaking for the new Aquatic Center, which is very exciting and a big part in our community. A couple of education meetings, sustainability meetings. We're looking at, you know, incorporating like we talked about the big blue chair or something at the south entrance down there. And also looking at maybe what events we could maybe do over the summer or something exciting and also on the landfill piece as well. We had a visit from Northern Lakes to discuss what potential having that partner at the table could bring to the community and discussions of international students. Maybe they would be the college that would help get the international students portion of our, of our consortium model off the ground. Of course, I attended the Minister's Schweitzer and Premier Kenny's meetings that the chamber hosted. We did budget. I've been in ARB training the last week and a half and attended the second PACT meeting. That is still trying to get up off the ground, I think, with, you know, having the mental health services here in the community. And I think that the committee is looking for a letter, and I can't remember, did we send a letter, Annette or Michael, in regards to Mark Smith about mental health? Like I know Staff Sergeant Erin and I had the conversation with Mark about needing that support in the community and becoming our own PAC team, but we couldn't remember if we, we did. Okay, that's something that they discussed, if we could maybe put together a letter or something. And then I think Erin also will have her input into the letter, so I'm not quite sure how to, how to get that going forward. Somehow we can talk maybe at GMP a little bit more about it. And then, yeah, I attended the second Chamber Town Hall meeting last night and like Bill had mentioned, I think, you know, the numbers are increasing. I think that...